Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 12th, Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee. And Eileen Barber will be joining us shortly, so we will get started. And I believe that we're going to start with Senior Center Long Term Operations Agenda Bill 7401. It's going to be Jeff Watling, Director of Parks and Recreation for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Good evening. Jeff Watling, Director of Parks and Recreation, just as you stated, here again to talk about the senior center. I think for both you and our listening audience, I want to emphasize before I jump into this that this agenda bill and recommendation does not represent a final decision as to the operation of the senior center, but it rather seeks direction and really represents a motion to pursue and explore an operating partner as we move forward. So with that, a quick overview of the agenda bill itself and then open for Q and A and discussion. So throughout this year, beginning January of 2017, hard to believe we're nearing a full year here, the city's begun and has been the interim operator of the senior center. This is through a lot of hard work of staff, volunteers. We have really set out the goal to not only keep that facility open as we pursue long-term operation, but really help to set that facility on a positive path and the future that is pretty clear this community wants for that facility. As we've done that, we also really intended and set forth a goal that as we're operating that facility in this mode, in this interim mode, it really is allowing for the needed time and the discussion amongst the community and with council to really explore that important policy decision of long-term operation and what we want that to look like and what we want that to be. In March of this last year, Mayor Butler initiated a senior center advisory group. That group spent many months working and looking very intently at this question of long-term operation. As you recall, in September of this year, at Services and Safety Committee, that advisory group came and presented to you their report on operation. It was a pleasure working with that group. Some members of that group are here tonight, should you seek any feedback or questions from them. That group and its work really represented two phases. The first phase was really a pretty in-depth information gathering and learning stage that took about three months, April, May, and June. From there, we jumped into some deliberation and really processing and developing the recommendation and the report, the core of that report. That report, if you recall, presented again a lot of the work and a lot of the research that was done through that group, but really also led to six, the framing of six, what we called guiding principles, that were really intended to become the framework and the foundation for operation, current and long-term operation of the senior center. Those guiding principles, to highlight those real quickly, one was transparency and oversight and how critical it is that that operation have transparency as a core principle for its operation. Partnerships and collaboration was another guiding principle, and that is regardless of operator, thriving vibrant senior centers happen and occur through multiple hands, multiple operators, multiple partners who are providing services and support. Another guiding principle was the cultural focus being customer service and customer service really being a core piece of the culture of that facility. The fourth guiding principle was coordination with city facilities, understanding whether the city is the direct operator or we have an operating partner at that senior center, how that senior center, how that facility is able to more closely relate to our community center, our swimming pool, the other facilities that we have that also provide services and programs for seniors. Great opportunity for that synergy. The fifth guiding principle was really balancing this mix of programs and services, recreation, lifelong learning type programs, but also a mix of social services, senior services, health services, and focus on our seniors and them aging well. The sixth guiding principle was around just agility, innovation, and creativity and making sure there's a culture, there's an expectation that that facility and the operator of that facility is constantly leaning forward and leaning in to what is happening, what best practices are, what programs and services can continue and how they can continue to be vibrant there at the facility. Those core elements from that report and as I talk about the recommendation tonight and that recommendation of the city exploring an operating partner, those guiding principles really become foundational to our search for an operating partner. As we put together a request for qualifications, a request for proposal, those six guiding principles become key elements of not only that proposal, but also key elements in how we evaluate a partner and a prospective partner for that facility. To the recommendation itself, the recommendation, as you see in the agenda bill, is just that, that we take this next year, jump into early 2018, and pursue and explore finding an operating partner for that facility. A lot of discussion went into that decision, but understanding that for many decades, that senior center has historically been operated by a nonprofit entity, understanding that not only have we not been the operator, but there are a number of agencies, both internal to Issaquah and within the region, that are positioned and have experience in managing that senior center and the ability to deliver that mix of social services and recreation programs that we felt it imperative to at least initially pursue, go down this road of pursuing an operating partner. It's the recommendation as well that in, should we find that partner, that we would frame up this arrangement, this agreement through a management agreement as opposed to a lease agreement that was the previous model for the operator. So in terms of timeline, real quickly, what we are looking to do pending council approval would be sometime first quarter of next year, February and March, we would get that request for qualifications, request for proposal. I kind of use both. I know in the agenda bill, I wrote request for proposal. In some ways, I feel like as we pursue this partner, it's almost going to be a hybrid of an RFQ and an RFP. RFQ being a typical model where we're really researching, requesting, seeking qualifications from interested partners, but also a request for proposal in that we are going to really be seeking any interested partner's business proposal, if you will, a work plan, a business plan of how they would intend to operate that facility, what mix of programs and services would they be able to offer, what are they expecting the city to do in terms of support? So in getting that advertised and put together and out in February and March, we would anticipate sometime April of next year, beginning the evaluation process and the interview process, allowing us in May of next year, being the milestone for selecting a partner, deciding if there is a partner out there and selecting them and beginning that negotiation process for the management agreement. That would allow us, as our milestone goal, to look at June of next year, to begin the council approval process for that agreement. With those milestones set and understanding, at the same time, an operating partner would need their time to begin to staff up, queue up, prepare. We would be anticipating a October, November of next year transition period to that operating partner as we sort of begin this journey. I'd want to emphasize in this, though, and as you certainly see, alternatives as we continue to discuss this and explore this, and again, this is not a final decision tonight, but it really represents that pursuit, that exploration of that partner. As we go into any RFQ or RFP process, the option always exists for us to, if we don't find a partner, we're back to the drawing board and we have the opportunity to explore what other models or options are out there. I say that in that this pursuit does not drive us towards one single decision of what this operation might be long-term. There is as well a request for some additional funding. As we're looking at our work plan next year within the department, as we're beginning to really scope out the work and the important work of this RFQ and RFP, we think it's imperative that we get some additional expertise through a professional services agreement. The request is up to $25,000 just to give us some additional resources to assist us, aid us in the development of this proposal, the evaluation of this proposal, and the crafting and drafting of that management agreement. So given the timing of this agenda bill and the likely approval, or this going back to city council in January, we would anticipate this or seek the additional funding for this, that $25,000 as a future 2018 budget adjustment amendment, I should say. So with that, and the fact that my voice is getting froggy, I will pause and open up for any Q and A or discussion.
So to be clear, that $25,000 will be in Jen's list tomorrow?
No. What we're saying is given this won't even go to council till January, this would be a, wouldn't be seen in the 2018 budget adoption. This would be seen as a future amendment sometime next year. But it certainly could be your pleasure, too, if you wanted to fold this into...
And remind me, the $25,000 for professional services, what does that mean? Is that, or me, when you say professional services, what do you mean specifically?
This would be a consultant agreement. So this would be, you know, finding someone, partnering with someone with direct senior services experience, direct experience in RFP, RFQ processes.
Got it. Questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I have a question. So I'm just reading through and understanding, so in regard to the advisory committee and the five months of time that they put in talking about this, that really they didn't have a recommendation one way or another, that they saw pros and cons to both sides. Could you just talk a little bit more about that and give me a little more detail?
Sure, absolutely. And again, some of the members are here, so they could certainly speak to that as well. Of the 10 members, as we really began to look and as you said, weigh the pros and cons, literally those 10 members spanned the spectrum of what is a preferred recommendation. So there was not unanimous consensus as to what the best model would be. And so as we looked at neighboring facilities, other facilities in the area, as we looked at and weighed the advantages of what a third-party operator might bring to this operation versus what are some of the advantages when cities are direct operators, there were really advantages and disadvantages that went with all of them. That discussion and that reality that this group really represented those that thought city operation was the better model and those that thought third-party operation was the better model or an operating partner was the better model, it really led us to this common ground and realizing these guiding principles really become central. Those six guiding principles that I spoke to, and I think where we reached 10 out of 10 unanimous consensus was, you know what? If those six guiding principles are achieved, regardless of the model, whether it's the city operating that way or whether it's a partner operating that way, if those six guiding principles are met, we're going to have a successful facility.
Just follow-up question. And then after that recommendation came through, then can you talk a little bit more about the decision-making to recommend the going out for RFP, RFQ?
Yes, absolutely. The recommendation from administration to pursue an operating partner?
Hmm.
Yeah. So again, with all of that information from the report, looking at and understanding what we as a city are currently, what we've historically done and been a direct provider of, how we are currently positioned staffing-wise, recognizing and seeing that there are, there are agencies that are positioned that have more experience, more direct experience of managing senior centers than we necessarily do as an agency, that it seemed like of those two options, pursuing, exploring, finding an operating partner felt like the best of the two to pursue initially. So thus the recommendation to, you know, in order to pursue that and to find that partner, initiating this type of process, an RFP, RFQ process, to find that partner seemed to make the most sense. As we look at some of the financial realities of where we're at, some of the other bigger picture decisions and discussions about what we want to be a direct provider of versus a indirect or partnered provider of in terms of services, that's what really led to this recommendation.
Thank you.
Eileen?
My questions have been answered.
All right. Well, so what we're going to do then is typically what we do on these agenda bills is we ask questions of staff, and when we have our questions answered, we open it to the public before we deliberate on it. So if any of the members of the public, either the working group or anybody else who's here would like to come and speak to us and take a couple of minutes, we would love to hear your thoughts. Or not.
[inaudible]
Yes. Feel free to come on up to the microphone. If you care to share your name and your relationship to the city, that would be fine, and if not, that's fine, too.
Oh, no, I'm happy to. Inez Peterson, I have moved to Inumclaw, but my heart's here in Issaquah. I just have a couple of comments, and no offense to anybody here, but there's always a lone wolf in every group, and I'm the lone wolf on the advisory council. From the very first meeting, we were told that the city was just temporary. Well, what that translates to is we managers of the senior center already have our mind made up, so whether you decide, whatever you decide, doesn't matter because we want an operating partner. We don't want the city to be responsible. Of course, I was, I'm for the city having the guiding hand. So I felt that biasness. It was excellent that it didn't really sway the group either way because they came back with no decision, even though they had been subjected to this bias at every meeting. I want to say about transparency, we asked all year for a budget, we never got it. I want to say about transparency, I asked about grants, I never got the information. And I have a question about the grants because we know they have $5,000 from one and 10 from another. Why am I still buying the birthday cakes and the cream for the seniors? Something's wrong with that picture. Not that I don't really mind that, but if the budget can't afford the birthday cake, something's really wrong. The grant situation, I feel this year was a waste. We didn't really make any significant progress. And next year, it's going to be the same thing because if no decision is made till the beginning of the fourth quarter, the operating partner has to have a grant process in place. Most of these grants can be applied for only at one time of the year, and so I see that there'll be another year of the city's predominant financial support, even if you do decide to go with this operating partner paradigm. Buckley has contacted me, they have meals five days a week. Three come from Catholic Community Services, and the other two, they hire their own cook and they love their own meals so much better than Catholic Community Services, but they were unaware of the older Americans Act. And on my parting words, I just want to say, we haven't taken advantage of that. There's medical services, health services, transportation, and of course, the meals for seniors. We can't ignore that opportunity, and our pipeline for that for the state is through the Council on Aging. So I hope that we don't, just because we're going to have another year of decision-making, that we're going to miss that opportunity to try to get some of that federal money. And I hope it stays around regardless of who's president. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else care to speak this evening?
Fred Nystrom, Issaquah resident. I hadn't planned to say anything until I heard Inez. I was also on the group, and I never felt for a moment that there was any strong guidance in one way or the other in our deliberations. We started off with a group of people still reacting from the blow-up of the senior center, so it was a thirst to have the city involved. But the more we talked and the more we looked at the pros and cons in a very open way, we ended up with about half and half, half looking for what the recommendation is, and I was on that half, and we're holding on to the idea of the city running it and taking care of things. I thought that the process was lengthy, it was fair, it was above board, and I just wanted to put my sense in on the fact that there was not an ongoing bias. There was open conversations on both sides. We took good ideas on sticky tape and put them up on the walls. We were about as open as any organization, volunteer organization that I've ever participated in, so the record should note that. I think the idea of going with an outside provider is excellent. It's going to cost the city more money anyhow, regardless of which direction we go, but Inez talked about the grants, the grants are going to be very important in the future if you're going to have additional funds coming in. And very few funding organizations want to say, well, we'll take our hard-earned money that we've gathered together and we can give it to the city to cut down their expenses. Doesn't work that way very often. So I think we'll have an opportunity to go after grants in the future, and whatever way it goes, I think it was a good, open, and fair process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
Councilmember David Wagoner, 360 Northwest Dogwood Street, relationship with the city since 1945. I was not on the advisory board. I was simply a senior that attended every meeting. And I agree with what Fred said, I felt like it was a fair, open. I can tell you, after watching the deliberations, that the members were totally torn between the two. There was no one side or the other on which it should be, city-run or a 501(c)(3). I agree with Jeff on the RFQ and RFP process, but I've got to tell you, I think that we're way too soon to make that RFP decision. There are several factors out there that did not get discussed, and the decision now is strictly not from the advisory board, but now from the city and administration's recommendations. One thing you have to keep in the back of your mind, because I have talked to a lot of seniors at the senior center, you have to consider what they want. It's not what the administration wants, it's what those seniors want and need. And I can tell you clearly through many meetings that those seniors said, "We love what the city has done for us in this past year, and we would like to see it continue." And I don't think there's anybody in this room that can deny those words that were said by those seniors in several different meetings. So before a decision is reached, council, I really think that you need to sit over there and listen to those seniors, okay? Some of them probably snore, but that's okay, because that's what we do after lunch. The important thing is that their voice be heard like mine's being heard tonight. In this country, we're so fortunate that we can come and talk openly and disagree with each other. We couldn't do that in the last senior center, because there's one person standing in front of you. You know what happened when I started to open my mouth, and it wasn't, it wasn't what Issaquah is all about. Issaquah is bigger and better than that. There is no doubt in my mind that we will get to that. I voiced that to Jeff many times, we'll get there, but I don't think we're at the RFP level, and I don't know that we want to reach out to anybody until we know what the qualifications are and what the qualities are that are out there to be bidding on an RFP. Let's use that $25,000 to find out what an RFQ can do for us, and so as a couple other council members said to me, let's make sure we do it right so we don't have to do it over again. The last experience that we had was not good, as we all know, and I'm not going to rehash that. It was not good. We live in a community that's better than that, bigger than that. Let's make sure that we've got our act together and go out and research. And this year, in the interim timeframe, you know that in the budget, because I saw it, it's there, that we've got five-day-a-week meals, two by Catholic Community Services and three by the city. That was one of the things that the task force was, Fred. That was one of the things the task force came out with, was absolutely clear from the seniors, they wanted that. The other one that was absolutely crystal clear, and Inez knows this, and that's transportation. They ask for transportation. All of those other recommendations are in this report. Please take time to read that. I know you get inundated with stuff you've got to read, but just take a few minutes to read those recommendations because they're powerful and they came from a great body of people. But listen to those seniors out there. They're the ones that you're taking care of. And remember, they built this community. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else here today that would like to speak to us on this agenda bill? Going twice? All right, that closes community feedback on this. Questions, thoughts?
Yes, thoughts? This has been, this has been an extremely long length of time to get here, but I think it sounds like everybody has come together and worked together, and I believe I'm feeling very comfortable with the outcome of what is being presented to us this evening and what we'll be able to see when we go over and visit the senior center, that it's going to be back to a very important, exciting place for seniors to spend their afternoons and their evenings, get their meals, their social life, and I'm excited to, I'm excited to come over and have lunch. So we'll wait for that.
Thanks, Eileen. Mariah?
So Jeff, I have a, one or two more questions. In regard to finding an operating partner, if this, what role would the city still have with an operating partner and what sort of agreements would be put in place to make sure that we didn't experience some of the problems? some of the problems that we had in the past? And how has there been thought around how that could be structured in regard to the operating agreement that would come forward? I know we've got some high-level, really great, sort of almost like a vision, you know, vision statement, that's great. But the specifics of how that would work so we didn't go down the same road, I'd just like to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I think, I think lessons learned is an important one. The framework that we would be looking at would be a management agreement as opposed to a lease agreement. A management agreement would give the city and recognize the city as the owner of that facility, much more, I don't know, a more, it really represents a more partnered position as opposed to a tenant-owner relationship that a lease agreement does. I don't have a model in front of me, but there are a lot of models that we would certainly want to build from in terms of effective public management agreements. I think some of the key elements of oversight of the relationship of that operating group's board and what role or opportunity the city might have in that is one way. That relationship may be strengthened. I think a management agreement would also recognize more clearly expectations and performance measures, performance metrics that would be expected to be met. It just, it allows, and I guess in a real simple way, maybe an oversimplified way, I apologize if it is, it recognizes the importance of the relationship and that it's a partnership. And it's, again, not such a, sometimes a lease agreement can feel like more of a hands-off, here, you go ahead and do it, we'll be over here. This is more of a framework that's really expected to say, hey, as the owner of the facility and as you, the operator of the facility, we're going to do this together and we're going to do it together in a much more relationship-focused way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not right this second.
Not right this second, all right. So I think that one of the things you spoke to was about the public process beyond this. And I think that it's really clear that both this committee today and then if this bill goes back and gets support out of the full council, you know, this is not the end of the public engagement process. And so I think that I'm very confident that these, what do they call, governing, not governing principles, the guiding principles, I think will inform the RFP very well and will inform our response to that. But there's still, there's still a big decision in front of the city before they pull the final trigger on that. So this is, what did Churchill say, this is not the beginning of the end, but this is perhaps the end of the beginning? So, so I support this and I support it, obviously going back to full council, regular business, not consent. Mariah?
Sorry.
Another question?
So when I'm looking at the timeline, I'm just throwing this out there, Jeff, wondering if, I agree, Tola, that this would not be the, you know, stopping further feedback from everyone at the Senior Center. It looks like the transition to the operating partner would be October, November. I'm wondering if there's a way to add in some more engagement with the seniors at the very beginning of the process, maybe early January, maybe through our, you know, with our neighborhood engagement person and maybe to have even just more feedback to council. But short of that, I would, I would say that if we were going to go forward, this was going to come to council, I would love to see information sent out to the Senior Center so we could have more feedback come in. I'd just really like to hear from, from the people at the Senior Center about how they're feeling. But overall, I would, I'm, this has been a really long process. It's been something near and dear to my heart to make sure that we get back on a great footing with the Senior Center and we've, and we've made such great strides. And I understand what's in front of us and see that as something that, that could definitely be workable. Love to have a little more feedback from the seniors. And, and I, the management agreement that we just talked about, I think is just absolutely critical and that that's constructed in a way that really thinks through and works through some of the problems from the past and make sure that, that there wouldn't be bandwidth for that, you know, to come about in the future. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this and supportive of it coming back before full council on regular business. But I asked a question and then I kept talking. I did that the other night.
There was a question in there.
Just in terms of, do you think we would have the time to get a little more of the public process?
Absolutely, yes. You know, as operators and as staff that are committed to those seniors and committed to getting this right, yeah, I think there's a number of vehicles and mechanisms that we can continue the engagement. Be it January, I think an opportunity to lay out what this process is, to inform the group, continue to get feedback on what that RFQ looks like. I think there's a number of touchpoints along this way that we can make sure that we're getting some feedback from seniors and also informing them of what's happening with the, with the process.
Even if we could set up a meeting and allow council to attend that meeting so we could hear the feedback just in the very beginning of the process, I think that would be great.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. The challenge is going to be that we've got a lot, well, we have a lot going on in January, right? Because we've got the, we're finishing, the budget this month, but council leadership and the appointment of the open seat. And we're suggesting another council meeting in January?
No, not another council meeting. I was suggesting that LaSanne.
Listen, yeah. Or if we were to host something at the Senior Center, perhaps.
And get some feedback. Councilmembers could attend.
Okay, now I understand.
Or not. And then we could get feedback.
Now I understand.
I just think that would be a great idea.
Understood. And you're nodding your head that that seems like a reasonable thing.
We could build that into the schedule.
Great, yeah, that sounds like a one-block. Other questions? Eileen?
No, not to me.
All right, so the motion is to move Agenda Bill 7401 to the December 12th, 20, well, Council Service Review, returning to full council, honor before January 23rd, 2017. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Three to.
A specific date?
It just says honor before January 23rd. That's what the, that's what the administration's recommendation is, so that's what we move. Obviously, probably the 23rd if you're going to put a meeting with, he's sitting in there in the midst.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Now we are going to move to Agenda Bill 7493, also, Jeff, Lake Samamish State Park Partnering Agreement.
And I'm back. All right, thank you. Decided it might be a little quicker. As you are aware and as I understand from a conversation that happened at the last council meeting, the city is interested and is, has been in conversations with Lake Samamish State Park, or State, Washington State Parks on putting together an EIS process for Lake Samamish State Park. Keith Niven has been my partner in crime in this effort. And Nikki Fields is here from Washington State Parks. Rather than go through the whole EIS process, what I was hoping to do, at least as a staff report, is address some of the additional questions I understand were asked at the, at the meeting. And those questions were really raised and wanted some clarification or confirmation on our park strategic plan process and how our park strategic plan, forgive me, relates to this work that's being intended at Lake Samamish State Park. I'll try and answer that in a couple of ways. First, as the park plan is nearing completion, it is very clear and very evident that our park system, the City of Issaquah's park system, as we begin to envision that park system and look into the future and how we really create a compelling, connected park system, how we relate not only to Lake Samamish State Park, but the other public properties around us is really a key element of this park plan. So it is very clear that the park plan is going to speak to and seek this desire to enhance this relationship between Lake Samamish State Park and the rest of the city's system. First way that's going to be reflected in the strategic plan, and we're really working hard and fast in getting that document completed. We're probably a month away from having a draft document out to the community to begin responding to and communicating it to it, commenting back to us on it. It's pretty clear, both in the vision statement of the document that's going to weave throughout this, the vision for Issaquah's park system, as we've taken all this public feedback in, is really twofold. And I think it's a unique opportunity throughout the Puget Sound region in this way. First part of the vision is, how do we create a compelling, diverse, high-quality park system within the City of Issaquah that serves our residents and the diverse needs and interests of our residents, not only in terms of activities, but connecting to nature? So in a way, it's, it's the vision of a quality system within the City of Issaquah while at the same time being, that system being a gateway into the public lands and the outdoor recreation that surrounds us. So it's really this most inside-outside vision. This map that I have up is an early, relatively early, this is about September, as we began to take all the public feedback and take all the site work and the groundwork we were doing with our consultant teams and started to pull together what ends up being just over 40 strategic projects that really have become the baseline for the strategic projects and strategic vision of this, looking out 20 years. I bring this and I point this out because, and I don't know if this cursor really shows, I'll go to it real quick. A very, a strong, compelling piece of Issaquah's park system, when you look at what's been acquired and then when you look, when this plan looks at the opportunities that we have in front of us, there's a strong, compelling anchor element that is this north-south, what we're calling a spine. I hope that term is actually rephrased as the community begins to own this. But you see a spine of the system that runs from Squawk Valley Park to our south border, along Issaquah Creek, along the Rainier Corridor, so many of our existing parks are along it, up to the lake and Lake Samamish State Park. I just mentioned this visual and point this out because it's just another way of reinforcing, that's going to be clear, our relationship, the residents, our city systems' relationship to Lake Samamish State Park is going to be instrumental in the vision moving forward. And so as we've worked with State Parks and Development Services Department, this EIS process, we feel is going to be extremely complementary to the park strategic plan and the vision we have for the system. So with that, any questions, thoughts, comments?
Start with questions. Eileen? Mariah? So what this doesn't directly show is sort of specificity around, there's going to be interconnects into the park system, correct? Right, for both, for pedestrian, for what, how do we envision spine, if you will, connecting to the park?
I think first and foremost, it's a, it's a greenway that's going to have clear, non-motorized pedestrian trail connection. And hopefully, I think as the trail planning work happens within the state, I think it's not going to be just one core. I think we would see opportunities in how to make pedestrian connections, not only from the east and East Lake Samamish Trail, but from sort of the central spine where Pickering Barn is. Also, how do we make pedestrian connections on the more western part of the state parks? So you're right, those specifics, I think, begin to take shape and take form. They're not really specifically represented on this map. So strong pedestrian connections into the, into the park. I think vehicular connections and where ultimately that vehicle entrance into the state park is going to be something that's going to be explored in the EIS as well.
What do the pink arrows mean?
I love it. I knew this was a risk of putting the map up. So the pink arrows are, again, a very early illustration of a desire to create some pedestrian connections over I-90. You know, as we, part of the, part of the work of this, of this effort, not only with public engagement, is let's accept and be practical about some of the barriers that exist in Issaquah. I-90 is a, it's a physical barrier, so.
You've got Lake Tradition to Central Park. Does that mean a pedestrian recreation of the old train trestle that went across at altitude? Because Tradition, Lake Tradition is at altitude and Central Park is at altitude.
We do not have specifics yet, so this is, this is, this represents the visionary part of this document. How and where those actual connections happen, we look forward to.
As long as somebody can find grant money for it.
Yeah.
It'd be an interesting homage to, to the city's history.
Well, yeah. I think, I think the pink arrows really represent also the, I think, the practical reality of the strategic plan. There are going to be certain elements, certain projects. The compelling parks component is probably what's going to lead that capital investment. In some of these cases, as we set the vision for these projects, and let's use an I-90 crossing as, as an example, perhaps the pedestrian component of that isn't going to lead that project. Perhaps as sound transit is being envisioned, or where that connection's going to be, might be the lead of that capital project. Now how do we make sure that pedestrian connection becomes an element of that work? This, this plan might represent it getting accomplished that way as well.
And does the red line look like a snake that swallowed a gazelle because you don't really know where, that's the John Wayne, is that?
Yeah, that is the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail and the vision.
And is it, does it look like it swallowed a gazelle because you don't really know where that trail in particular is going to cross I-90?
Where it's going to cross. And it also represents some of the, the future planning and work with Centralistic Plan and sort of how and where that actual corridor happens is still some future planning.
And then you mentioned in the next month or so, the draft of the Parks Recreation Open Space Trail. I heard from, I heard from a little bug told me that that was going to be actually before the end of the month, the first draft was going to be out to, not to council, but.
To community.
Or some of the community, they would see it before the end of the year.
That, that remains a goal. We are meeting with the park board, as we're ever-changing and ever-moving forward, we're meeting with the park board next week, in fact, and taking one of our sort of last lifts before that draft is formed, is taking this list of long-term projects. And if you took a look at the survey we gave to the community just last month, we got some great feedback on these projects. We're actually, next Tuesday night with Park Board, running, we've set up some criteria and a scoring matrix that we're going to run all of these projects through to identify what our near-term, midterm, and long-term investment priorities are. And so as that unfolds on Tuesday, public is welcome to the Park Board meeting. As, the timing of getting that final draft done, it's either going to be the end of this month or very early in January.
Got it.
Yep.
Other questions?
The entrance now is going to be moving, is that what I'm understanding?
I don't know that that's been a final decision. I think it's being considered and explored.
It is being considered, sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Fields from State Parks. So we are considering moving the entrance. There are a few problems with the current entrance. One, it isn't very visible. Another is something I described at a meeting last night, is as you're, as you're driving toward the entrance, have you had this experience where it's like, oh, is this it? No, that's the house. Oh, here, no, that's the shops. Finally, here's the entrance. And so there, there's that kind of issue. And also, the, the current entrance and Tibbetts And also, the, the current entrance and Tibbetts Creek aren't playing very well together. So as beavers use the creek and build dams, that has caused flooding onto our entrance road. And so we've had to work through those kind of issues in the past. So if we were able to move it to another location, it may solve both this visibility and wayfinding problem, but also could provide opportunities for doing restoration work at Tibbetts Creek. And that brings us back to the, the vision that we had for Lake Samamish State Park that was displayed in our 2007 master plan for the park. And that was one of, a melding of recreation and restoration within this park, and that the park was really a place to connect people to the natural world. And I think that being able to do that kind of restoration on Tibbetts Creek would be totally within the goals that we have had since that plan first came.
I have a question, and I don't really know who it's for, but I'll ask you. So, you know, at the southeast corner of the state park are the soccer fields. And one of the things, it seems like if you move the entrance, I don't know how exactly this would work, but if it, if it moved back somewhat, but not all the way back by the soccer fields, you could conceivably have, instead of having an entrance for the soccer fields, that's like four inches from the intersection of 56th and 12th. But, you know, you could have something a little further away, and then that would, that would have huge benefits on, because I find actually, I find Exit 15 is, at the worst, not at 5:00 at night when you try to go home, it's actually 12 noon on a Saturday or 11:00 a.m. on a Saturday, and you're trying to get across, and the soccer folks are going in and out of those fields. So it seems like if this is done right, it could benefit the state park and benefit the city for, for helping clear up the, that intersection a little bit. Is that something that we're looking at? Jeff?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's those programmatic elements that, and how we sort of mesh, address some of the historical issues and find a way to sort of complement recreational use in the rest of the state park in a better way.
Yeah.
Questions? Mariah, I know you have one.
I do. I just, I'm looking at the agenda bill and, and I guess we just don't have everything that happened in there, or the updates, so it says that this came before Land and Shore on November 2nd. Sorry, just one second. And then came to council on December 4th, and then we just don't have anything after that. So I just wanted to, could you just give a little snapshot of that?
Sure. I'm going to, Keith used this word at, at the Land and Shore meeting, I'm going to phone a friend and invite Keith Niven to come up and talk what's next after this.
So we haven't updated the agenda bill since the December 4th council meeting because the next update will be after this committee meeting. So we'll do an update based on the conversation that comes out of this meeting for the 18th. We're assuming that this committee sends it back to full council for action.
And I think we might have talked, touched on the, the questions that came during that meeting, but I'm not sure we covered all of them, so just wanted to ask that.
So.
Questions that came from council.
So the questions, I might need to go back and watch, that was a, that was a heavy council meeting. What I remember was the questions about the budget allocation, and I think Councilmember Ramos asked the question, why, if we're, if we're going through budget right now and there's an ask for a partnering agreement with State Parks, why not go ahead and put that into the proposed 2018 budget as opposed to calling it out as a separate budget adjustment next year? So that, so the administration heard that question, and I think what you're going to see on the deliberation list tomorrow night is this item will be listed as one of the things to potentially include in the budget for next year as opposed to having it a separate mid-year budget adjustment. So that question, I think, we're tracking on. I'm not sure I remember other questions, Mariah?
So in terms of the, just having the whole park strategic plan, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly, but I thought that one of the questions was around just the timing.
So I believe I was the originator of that question. And it was really, that's why we're having this conversation now.
That's why we've got, I just want to make sure we covered the questions that did come up.
Yep, yeah. I, I was aware, I wasn't suggesting that we wait until the council gets the Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Plan, but rather have this conversation so I could understand, I just, for my own benefit, how, because it's so important, I think, the, the green necklace, that I wanted to know that before we moved forward with this.
Right. Okay. That, I think that was all, I, I think what would be more helpful to me, I know we, we're updating and updating, especially when something comes to council, then it gets sent back. But if it's at council, then it comes back to committee to have the update of why, and then the questions that came from council, so we can make sure we cover all of those before we go back to council again. That would be helpful for me.
Sorry about that.
No, that's, that's.
And I think staff generally endeavors to do that. And that's why Jeff presented this.
Yeah, no, that's great.
The way he did. Chatted about it before. I was aware that he was going to be presenting this.
Okay.
So with that, public comment?
So just talking about the, the timing on the state, from the State Parks perspective, is State Parks currently has funding to begin work on an EIS. We don't have enough funding to complete work on an EIS. So we're currently juggling whether to start work with, right now, without knowing whether we'll be able to finish. We do have pressures both internally and externally. So we are being approached fairly often by new advocates for things that could go in the park. And it seems like every couple of weeks, there's a new proposal. And we keep telling them, hold off, we're going to start this planning process and figure out what should be in the park and what should not be. And so there are the advocates for each of those proposals that are, that are sort of waiting. And then internally, we've got this money that isn't being spent right now, and we have people that are about to be laid off because the state doesn't have a capital budget. And so our, our budget folks are looking at what we should be spending money at. I'm not saying it's going to go away right away, but I think eventually, if, if, if we don't start work on this, we may need to decide whether we're going to keep that money held for Lake Samamish or whether we need to use it for something else. So those are the, the timeline pressures that State Parks is considering right now.
Can I ask Nikki a question? So what is that timeline? I mean, we don't want to, we've, it's been a very long time in coming to get something done here, and I don't want to lose any of it. So what is that timeline that we need to begin to show the state that we are definitely moving forward with this, and it's an important project for us in our community?
I think what we've been saying is, is early 2018. That is a little loose. But, but we've been telling the public and telling the advocates for these projects and telling our budget office, telling everybody in early 2018 will know whether we're moving forward on this. So I, I think that that would be sufficient for us. It's, if, if it looks like it's moving, but at a slightly slower pace, we, we could probably continue talking like that, but that is what people's expectation is right now.
So moving this agenda bill forward, is that beginning sign that we are definitely, okay? And then you, and then what would be the next steps after that to make sure we're stayed on course?
Well, if the, the council does approve it at, at the next meeting, then I think that everybody is happy and, and will be ready to start work pretty soon on, on this planning effort to figure out what should be in the park and then to look at the environmental implications of that, which I think is really important. If, if it takes longer than that, I, I think just continuing the conversations and make sure that everybody understands that, that we're working through it.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Mariah?
Well, one question. So it, Jeff, just the, the traffic evaluation would, I, I know we already talked about the entrance change, what else would, or Keith, what, the traffic evaluation, I'm just trying to remember what else that would encompass.
Sure. So, so there's a lot of competing interests with the desire to move the entrance, right? I think from a park usability standpoint, it's clear why they would like to move the entrance closer and to a more prominent location. As we move that entrance closer to, so what the money is covering is it would go to CH2M Hill, who does the city's traffic modeling. And what they would do would be to see how close they could move that entrance to the intersection of 56th and 12th before it breaks. And, you know, that could result in a lot of information that then parks could decide what they want to do with that. For example, if you take it all the way to the intersection and create like a five-legged intersection, you know, could you still keep the same level of service of traffic movement through that intersection? And if so, what kind of improvements would be necessary? You know, it was mentioned earlier, the, by Councilmember Martz, the driveway for the Issaquah Soccer, you know, so you've got that driveway and you've got the main entrance, and, you know, if you bring it closer to the intersection, I think ultimately what it's going to do is, is it's going to generate, it's going to, it's going to test the tolerance of, of our traffic operations is what it's going to do. And so what we'll learn from that is where can it be located, and then what kind of traffic improvements would be necessary to generate a certain number of trips? And then from that, so I look at that as driving a lot of the conversation of what can happen in the park, other than the natural habitat and Riparian Corridor stuff. Obviously, that's not generating any, any trips, right? But as they would like to talk about other uses, and whether it's with Issaquah Soccer or REI or other partners, you know, any activity within the park is going to generate a certain number of trips. And I think what the EIS would do, and we would have to scope out the, what the EIS will cover, but traffic will be one, obviously. And what I see coming out of that process is, here's a certain number of trips that State Parks has and can allocate to different activity uses, but then they can choose the, from kind of a list of things that they might want to do in the park, and as long as they don't go beyond that number of trips, then whatever mitigation that comes out of this traffic analysis would cover that. So it would give them the flexibility of programming future things for the park and having the predictability of what kind of traffic improvement requirements would be necessary.
That out, thank you.
Okay, sure.
All right. So with that, we'll ask if there's other public comment?
I have sort of a different view of EISs and development agreements because been through, I don't know, six. So I want to know if State Park is the lead agency for the EIS. I want to know the public involvement for the scoping, because I think we, the community at large needs to understand what the EIS is going to cover and decide whether that is appropriate or non-appropriate. And I haven't seen that sort of a schedule of events at this point in time. And that could take a while. Last time we did that, it took years, two years, I think. So hopefully, it wouldn't take that long. Realizing that the vast majority of the park is sensitive area and it's buffer, and you do an EIS because you are going to be creating potentially immodest impacts, and you're going to have to accept those. I, I think that this has to be a super-strong document, realizing that all of these critical areas are going to be changing over time. So when we then migrate to a development agreement, then we also have to be looking at how long that development agreement should last, and I don't like these development agreements. And we don't have a strong SEPA person, except for the director of a department in our town right now. And so I'm, I'm sort of at a loss as how we're going to get a good document without, without a very strong SEPA person protecting the interests of the town and the state park. Because I don't want to have to be screaming and shouting every time they start impacting some of my critical areas. So these are things that I see as deficits and future problems in the process that I would actually like to have ironed out in the, in the first two months with the scoping. And I would like to have that scoping come back to council so that it can be part of the public process and understanding of the interconnection with the state park. I have so much more, but I'm going to stop there.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue?
Hi, I'm Dabby Berto, and I'm a board member with Friends of Lake Samamish State Park. And I just wanted to fill you in on a little bit of, certainly, we're encouraging this, but something that we've been working on for the last year and are continuing to work on is trying to find some extra capital funding in the state to do a pre-design report, which is really another term for updating the master plan. Because as Nikki said, there are a lot of other projects that have come forward that may have potential and need to be looked at, and has, Connie said, it took a long time before, but also would bring us some new cost estimates on all the different components that are in the master plan. Having all that information from the pre-design report or the update of the master plan at the same time as the EIS would just help us so much, then we would be able to come up with what's Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and funding from the state, future capital projects. And right now, without a pre-design report, we can't get more than $5 million at a time. Instead, we go in and piecemeal 1, 2, and 3 million. We'd like, when all this work gets done, to really be able to go to the state and say, we're ready. We've done our homework. Here's what we're looking at, and we need some big bucks for the next round or two. So wanted you to know, we're, we're working on that aspect of it and excited to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Anyone else? Saying twice? No. All right. Thoughts? Eileen?
Do you need to have the recommendation?
Yes. Sorry, one second here. Go to it. The administration recommendation is to return to full council on December 18th.
So quickly.
I'm excited for it to move forward.
I want to ask around this question about identifying the public input on next steps. And there's public comment on scoping and how the public can be involved as we go forward. Can the administration plan on presenting the notional engagement schedule at the 18th as part of the full council? You look quizzical.
Yeah, no. No. So clearly, work needs to be done to figure out how that wants to unfold. I think we need to have some conversations with State Parks. You know, this was, I think this was a big lift to ask y'all to kick in, you know, 250...
$1,500.
And until you guys say yes and please work on a development agreement, we have not, I've not spent more than, well, I spent an hour waiting to talk about this last time, but I, we haven't really talked about this. So I think what would happen is if you guys approve this agenda bill, it sends the signal both to State Parks and the administration that we need to... both to State Parks and the administration that we need to sit down and start planning out those next steps. And that would be something that, you know, if the council wants some sort of a schedule, because this is a significant work item, I think maybe as part of the recommendation, if you would like to see that, come back as a separate AB just to present the schedule and the community outreach, we could probably do that sometime in January.
Okay.
Does that sound like a good?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I just think there's going to be a lot of interest in the community. And I think, you know, the sooner that we can tell the public how this is going to move forward and how they can give us their thoughts, the happier people are going to be. And if you tell me that's January, then that's January. But I think we want to at least tell people on the 18th that we're going to come back in January and talk a little bit more about the public process.
We can do that.
Jeff's nodding his head as well. All right. Thanks. Mariah?
So thank you, Tola. That was my question as well, and so that sounds great. I would like to see that happen in January. And this is exciting, and we have a little more, you know, more work to do and more to understand about it, but like to see it moving forward. But having that public feedback and looking at the scoping and that kind of thing, I think is really important.
Excellent. I'm wondering if I looked at the wrong recommendation. I think I may have looked at the wrong recommendation. I may have looked at the next one. We'd be moving to...
authorize the mayor?
Yeah, but I mean, we're not doing that tonight. This is because this bill hasn't been updated, but we're just, we're sending it back for the 18th, right?
Right.
Was I in fact correct when I said the 18th?
Yeah, so right now, that bill has a current recommendation from Land and Shore. And I think procedurally, what I don't know, and if Bob wants to weigh in, I'd be more than happy to allow him to.
Well, that recommendation is December 4th, which doesn't seem to work very well.
So the, so a new recommendation coming from services seems like it potentially takes precedent over Land and Shore's recommendation. So if y'all want to make a recommendation, which would include coming back with a new AB in January, scoping out the work plan and the public outreach process, that might be what I've heard so far.
So not coming back? No, we still want to come back on the 18th to get the full council's approval of $250,000.
To authorize, excuse me, the mayor to enter into the partnering agreement and to direct the administration to move forward with working on a development agreement with State Parks.
Right.
So that piece is what we're looking for clarity from the full council on.
Right.
The extra little frosting for the separate AB would be the add-on, I think, to the current motion.
I trust the administration can write this all up in a coherent recommendation, but it sounds like...
Absolutely.
Sorry. So I'm just looking back at the AB and the update from Land and Shore, and just sort of, I asked this question earlier and missed it myself. What the committee, what Land and Shore had talked about before that came on December 4th was the use of mitigation funds, shared parking opportunities, urban edges, and potential community outreach. I think we've talked about potential community outreach. I just didn't know if the shared parking opportunities, the urban edges, and the use of mitigation funds is something we need to discuss further, if that was answered. And that might be some of the material that council is expecting.
So those topical issues, I think, would be part of what would be considered in the development agreement. As we start to work with State Parks on what the development agreement includes, you know, for example, it could include discussion about shared parking, or it could include some conversation about creating a more urban edge to the State Park that would maybe feel more like, and this is kind of, I think, what Jeff said at Land and Shore, would feel maybe a little bit more like it's almost an extension of the city park system as opposed to the State Park system. And if that is indeed the case and functions that way, do we enter into a management agreement for maybe a portion of the property? That's all conversations that would need to happen as part of the development agreement process with State Parks to potentially include that. I think what we would need to do is to, you know, because those issues were raised, I think, among other things, put those on the table for conversation points, not only with the community, but also between the two parties of the development agreement. So I don't know that we would have any insights into those by the 18th because those conversations haven't even begun yet.
But to document that so that could go forward in conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was understanding what I was reading.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Eileen, anything else?
No, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, it sounds like we're three to oh to bring it back on the 18th with the additional language about coming back in January with the public engagement piece. And I'm excited about this. I think this is something council's been excited about for a long time. It's nice that you get to be part of that vote for you. We've counseled because you've been so instrumental in this conversation.
Since I've been working with Nikki for a long time in the very first degree now, yeah.
So it's nice, and we're putting our money where our mouth is.
We'll talk about that tomorrow night. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will go to Agenda Bill 7508, which is Personnel Policy Manual Changes Resulting From State Sick Leave Requirements. And this is Lori Brown, our Director of Human Resources.
Yeah, feel free to sit at the table.
Something unrelated to the city, but good news at the national level.
So we're here tonight to talk about the paid sick leave policy, and this is RCW 1433. On December 4th, we ask you to approve a resolution that expresses city support for the new state sick leave policy and would adopt a sick leave policy for the city that complies with the state code. So in summary, the effective date for the state law is going to be January 1st, 2018. It requires one hour of sick leave for every 40 hours worked. So for the city, what that means is it will apply to all non-exempt positions, including our part-time, non-regular. Those employees currently do not receive sick leaves, so we'll be adding sick leave banks for those employees. It expands the definition of family, particularly for parent and child. It limits the ability to request verification for use of sick leave, and it will prohibit us from taking adverse actions against employees for using their sick leave. The policy statement that we've asked you to approve, so a couple statements, I guess a couple of points about that policy statement. It does mirror the model policy that's been recommended by the state, so we use that as a template. So we took that policy and incorporated our current sick leave policy into what the state is recommending. Also, it, we tried with that policy to comply with the sick leave law, the state law, but not to minimize the financial impact. So we've tried to comply, but not go beyond what the state is requiring us to do. The new policy that we're proposing will extend sick leave to part-time, non-regular, which I've mentioned before, so they will now have a sick leave bank. It will expand the definitions of parent and child, and it will change the verification process that you need to go through for use when you're using sick leave. For administrative reasons, the definitions and the verification process will be extended not only to non-exempt employees, but also to exempt as well, so that we don't have two sets of definitions under which employees are using sick leave. It also will disallow sick leave incentives, so the calculation that we use for the wellness days off and the sick leave incentive days will no longer be allowed. We'll need to make some changes there. The policy changes, all of the new policy and any changes that need to be made must, they'll need to be negotiated, so they are subject to collective bargaining, and we will be negotiating any of those changes and bringing those back to you. Any questions?
No, it seems this is clearly our good faith attempts to get squared with the law that's out there, so this isn't one of those ones you've got a lot of latitude with. But questions?
So thanks, Lori, for the overview. And so it would extend to part-time, regular. I'm not sure of all the definitions that you have of people that are not full-time.
Okay.
So you have part-time, regular. What are the long-term?
Okay, so regular would be the long-term.
Okay.
Regular employees.
Okay.
A part-time, non-regular.
Okay.
Are the employees who currently don't have sick leave. They don't have benefits at all.
Okay. And then anything beyond that? Because I know you have other definitions of people that are temporary or...
Yeah, we use limited term. We use that as a status.
Limited term. That's what I, I'm sorry, I just, for the life of me, I could not pull that out.
So we can, we can have part-time, regular positions, and those employees would have benefits.
Right.
And then we have limited term, and those employees are actually in FTEs on a limited term basis.
Okay. Okay.
And also have benefits.
Okay. Go ahead, I might have another question here.
Eileen? This is where having an HR professional on council as opposed to a mechanical engineer is helpful.
So it, I'm just trying to look through again the just conversion, cash out. So basically, you followed the state policy, and it sounds like also anything in regard to wellness, that kind of thing, that's all gone away, so you'll be changing those policies?
Will need to, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the law, you'll see the last, the last section of the new policy prohibits, you know, yeah.
Any type of incentive.
Disallows incentives like that.
Okay. It seems very straightforward, and you're following the state policy and morphing all of your policies into that, so that makes really good sense to me.
All right, so is this coming back three to oh on consent to full council on the 18th?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Teresa, you got that?
I got it.
All right, thank you. Last, but not least, this evening, we have Agenda Bill 7519, E-City Gov Alliance Inter-local Agreement with our own Bob Harrison, City Administrator. By the way, I want to, I want to say, staff has been exactly right about how long each of these pieces has taken us. We're within one minute of where we projected to be, so nice job.
It's good leadership.
That's right.
Clearly, that's clearly what's got to be the leadership. And with that, Bob?
Thank you.
Biggie's leadership.
So we are part of the E-Gov Alliance. It's been around since the mid-1990s, and they provide several programs for us, the most notable being mybuildingpermit.com, which allows for online building submittals. They've also had a history of other programs, so they had a Park and Recreation Program, a Trails Program, Economic Development Program, and one more, which I'm forgetting right now, unfortunately. Oh, a bidding program, so you could do online bids. What's occurred over the last, particularly the last 10 years, is most of those programs have kind of fallen by the wayside as the private sector stepped up and provided alternatives that either work better or is more functional. And so most of the investment that's occurred is in mybuildingpermit.com. And so last January of 20, or this January, 2017, the board decided to kind of repurpose and refocus the organization that would be more appropriate to our bread and butter program, which is the mybuildingpermit.com. And so as a result of that, we decided to relook at the ILA Interlocal Agreement, which is between all the various partners, and there are six as part of this, and came up with, in partnership with the Pacifica Law Group, which is the group that, the law group that provides legal services for E-Gov. We came up with kind of three primary areas of changes in the ILA, and the ILA, along with the edits, are included in your packets. So the first one is, from a governance standpoint, there's a board, and then there was an operations board. And then each of the units, programmatic units, had a separate board that was kind of an advisory board. And so the advisory boards would meet, they'd provide their recommendation to the ops board. The ops board would, you know, modify that or work through that, and then they'd provide a recommendation to the board. Really what's happened since we moved to mybuildingpermit.com, the building inspectors of those programs are really the, kind of, the advisory board or the management team of the building permit program. And so there really, we've discovered there really isn't a need for an ops, operations board anymore. And so that, that management team reports directly to the board at this point. And so the first substantive change to the ILA is that all references to the operations board are removed. So they haven't met since 2016, so they're really just a non-functional, you know, part of the structure. The other, the second big change is on the board members. So in the past, and we used to have up to eight board members, they made the ultimate decisions, and then there were also subscribers that were a big part of the program. Now that our focus is primarily on E-Gov, we have recommending changing the board to allow for subscriber viewpoints, so the board could appoint a subscriber, and they could add some additional subscribers as needed. And the primary reason for that is we've got a couple of really big subscribers, namely King County and Snohomish County, that are part of this now. And they actually pay more a year as a subscriber than we pay and contribute as a board member. And so, you know, from a governance standpoint, they said, well, we're paying all this money, but we don't have a voice on invest, future investments and that type of, you know, decisions on the program. So this was really as a request of King County and Snohomish County that they have some representation on the board. And then the other piece related to that is it clarifies who the voting representative is. So it is the CEO of the organization, so it could be the mayor or the city manager or other equivalent, or an appointed representative. So, you know, the deputy or equivalent. I think one of the challenges has been that some communities were sending IT manager or sometimes lower representatives, and they weren't empowered to make decisions. And so it just started to gum up the works in the decision-making process. And so this clarifies that on those board meetings, which is, you know, going to be probably once a quarter, that, you know, the CEO or CEO or representative would actually be the one who has to attend those meetings. And then the last item is on the cost allocation. So previously, the cost allocation was based on population for the board members, and then the partners, rather, and then the subscribers paid a fee based on whatever the overall investment in that annual program was. And then we switched for MVP, when that really kind of took effect, to a different program based on permit revenue. So the amount of permits and permit revenue that we generate, that ends up determining what the annual contribution is for that, for that program, which then drives the budget. You may recall, we have a technology fee of 5%. So 3% of that goes to E-Gov, and then the balance stays in, within the Department for Investments in Technology. And so the final recommendation was to change the program from a population perspective to a, well, to what it calls a depends perspective. So depending on the program, it would vary based on, you know, kind of your overall usage of the, of the product. And then lastly, it provides for a provision that, what we discovered is, if a partner member did not want to participate in a program, they were, under the structure of the bylaws, required to pay that annual contribution anyway. So you may, like Bellevue... So you may, like Bellevue moved from this local gov, jobs net, to neo-gov, and so they were essentially, they had their own independent system, yet they were still paying for this, for this personnel system that they were no longer using. And now what you look, when you look at the users of that program, they're primarily small cities. So what it does allow us to do is there may be some smaller partnership arrangements or some other provisions that would allow for those communities who are the most, you know, active and primary users to invest and pay the costs on that. You know, the alternative previously was if you were a board member and didn't like that or primarily used one program, you had to just cease being a board member and then become a subscriber. And so that was, you know, affecting kind of long-term finances of the organization. So here we are. This is going to all the various agencies that are partners, and they've, you know, run through all the various city attorneys, and so if we're good, which, you know, these aren't substantial changes, then we'd recommend approval, and given your agenda, I know the committee ultimately makes its decision, but given the agenda on December 18th, you know, we would suggest that it go on consent, since we don't have much of an option to make any changes anyways, because it would then require all five other partners that are part of the ILA to go ahead and adopt our changes, which they may or they may not. So essentially, kind of, it is like the last one. It is what it is, unless we choose not to be a partner anymore.
I have no non-staff people in the audience, so no public comment. Yeah, I mean, I would like to send this back on consent on the 18th. I think it's good that we saw it in committee, but I don't think full council needs to see it. Mariah?
Consent would be, yeah.
All right, 3 to 0 consent on the 18th.
Thank you.
And with that, we adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody.